Can I have a motion to resume public session? Mr. Wernowski, Ms. Littlewood, all in favor? The vote is unanimous. We're now back in public session. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just as well.
All right, I'm now going to call the hearing to order. So we have a public hearing on our Capitol Project.
He's coming.
Sorry, I may have been a little excited and went out of order. Wonderful. How are you?
It's red. Oh, okay. Thank you. Red means go. All right. So this evening here to open up the public hearing on the upcoming referendum for our future-ready Capitol Project. So on the agenda, we're going to do some quick introductions, talk about the history, what got us here, and talk about our planning process, and what's in the final scope, financial information, schedule, and questions. So some quick introductions. I'm Mitch Ball. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Here with us is Brian Solinsky from SEI Design Group, part of our architectural firm, Joe Palato from Campus Construction, who helps with construction management, and Krista Carlo from BPD Municipal Finance. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. So happening right now, we have our 2022 Capitol Project. This is a $45.5 million referendum called Building Brighter Futures. Within that, we are addressing the high school and middle school technology rooms, upgrading those to more modern spaces. The high school fax area, that opened earlier this week on Monday, and staff and students are now in those spaces. And they're wonderful. Thank you to our team for the work that they've done on those. And then the district office moved into the high school, our old West Side Academy, which is in the southeast side of the building. And that move has happened, and we are currently in operation in that space. In addition to that, Phase Two, which is underway, includes the music, middle school music renovation and expansion that will closely replicate the spaces that are in our high school space. That has not started yet. That won't start until after April break, but it will be commencing soon. The Florence Brasser main office will get an upgrade, and it will become a more secure space for staff and students. As well as, we are working on a new pickup and drop-off area for students in the morning and afternoon that allows us to pull cars off of Laredo Drive, which is next to our Florence Brasser Elementary. That's been a consistent concern of our community members, that traffic backs up in that area. And so we're looking to move that traffic off of the road and create a safer pickup and drop-off area. Two multipurpose turf fields will be installed off of Buffalo Road, one being a baseball field and one being a softball field. They'll also double as soccer fields and lacrosse fields as well. And then, another thing that we're doing through this project will be addressing building condition survey items at the middle school, high school, and Florence Brasser. So what's, that's not on that slide, sorry. What's building condition survey items? Building condition surveys are things that we, is a process we go through every five years, starting in 2010. And so in 2010, New York State Education Department came out and said, "You need to be reviewing your spaces top to bottom on a regular and ongoing basis." And we look at all of the mechanicals in the buildings, from the roofs to the HVAC units to the flooring, and we assess the condition of those spaces in conjunction with our architect to determine how much usable life they have left and what is the value of those items if and when they need to be replaced. And so in the last building condition survey, which happened in 2021, we identified about $110 million worth of work that needs to be completed. And so a number of those things were included in the Building Brighter Futures project and will also be included in the Future Ready project. So in terms of Capitol Project, there's really three main phases. One is the planning phase. That's what we're in right now. And typically, that takes about a year. And we work through with staff members to look through the things that we need to do. From there, we get to design. Design only happens if the Capitol Project is approved through public referendum. And during that process, we meet with stakeholder groups, people who have a vested interest in spaces, and we look at what the needs are that need to be addressed within the scope that has been identified. And from there, that procedure takes about a year. And then from there, we submit design documents that are developed by the architect to the New York State Education Department. Their approval takes anywhere from six to eight months. And then from there, once the New York State Education Department approves them, because they're in a queue with about 700 other school districts, it takes them some time. Then we're able to bid out the work to contractors and begin that work. And so that's where you get to the build phase. And so all in all, these processes are long, and they require a lot of involvement by various stakeholders within and outside of our, outside our community. So the, again, the building condition survey, that's a major priority for us in this project, and I'll share a little more on that in terms of the infrastructure and things that need to be addressed. In addition to that, another priority of ours was prudent and sound financial planning to ensure that we're doing work in a way that minimizes the burden on our taxpayers. So again, our goal is to have no increase in taxes associated specifically with this project. So the planning process includes monthly OACM meetings. What's an OACM meeting? It's an owner-architect-construction-manager meeting. That's with the individuals in this, in this room, along with the district. Building tours of all facilities with SEI Design Group and Campus Construction. We look at unaddressed items from the 2021 Capitol Project. So what are the things maybe that needed to be addressed, but we were unable to? What are some of those things, and how can we pull those forward into the next project? Meetings with building leadership. This is a key component, to sit down with building leadership, as well as department leadership, to talk about what are the needs of your building? What are the needs of your staff? What are the programmatic and instructional needs within your spaces as we look towards the future? We evaluate mechanicals, AC and gathering places. The reason why this is highlighted here is that recently, the New York State Education Department put out a regulation that says we have to maintain certain temperatures in rooms. We already have a low point. Now we have a high point, too, is if spaces get too warm, we have to do one of two things. One is we have to put AC in all of our buildings. And so we didn't assessment of that, and to have AC in all of our buildings, all of our classrooms, it would be about $170 million, which is not tenable for our district, given financial considerations. Another option is, is that we, we cool spaces that are larger gathering spaces, and then we cycle students in and out of those spaces on the six to 10 days where we go above 88 degrees. So for us, that is, that is our cafeterias, our gymnasiums, and our libraries. So that's what we're looking to do within this project, if approved. We generated a project scope list based on all this information, and then we began evaluating the impacts financially. So in terms of the final scope project, and I just want to point out that scope means, these are the things that we've identified as being priorities. It doesn't mean that we've done any design work around what these spaces will actually look like. Just speaking frankly, our architect is not actually fully employed until a project is approved and we enter into contract with them. So right now, we're in the scoping phase where we look at, what is the work we want to accomplish? What's the estimated cost of that using estimation? And then what is a cost that we might incur when we bid it in two years from now? So we put in a little bit of escalation of costs, knowing that inflation will be a factor on costing out projects. And so when thinking about this project, there's four main categories. Failing infrastructure, needs renovations, replacements, and new work. Overall, this project is significantly infrastructure-related. So it's primarily in infrastructure, and then renovations, then some replacements, and only 8% of the project is in new work. Again, much of this is focused on that building condition survey, where we identified about $110 million of work that needed to be done, and so much of it is in this project. So at the high school, looking in terms of infrastructure, at boilers that need replacing, rooftop units for heating, and then some roofing replacements as well. Noting that we have a very large building, the high school, and it's one floor. So in some high schools, there's multiple floors, so you have less roofing. Here, we have a whole lot of roofing. And so some of those roofings are failing to the point where sometimes we, on really rainy days, we have some buckets that have to go in the hall, unfortunately. In terms of renovations, adding a lactation room. In terms of replacements, paving Spartan Way. Spartan Way is in rough condition, as well as the rear parking lot and the main parking lot. In terms of new work, looking at additional stadium bleachers and stadium fencing. We know that when we have large competitions here, we have two things going on that can be problematic. One is we don't have enough seating for our, our people watching games. And then the other one is, is that it's hard to manage all of the movement of people in that space because there's no fencing going around the whole site. And so we'd be looking to do those two things. There are a couple things within this proposal that would be accelerated in terms of the timeline. These are two of those things, whereby we'd be looking to submit documents to SED pretty soon after the vote so that we can start that work within, hopefully, a year of approval if the project is approved. These are two of those things because they don't take a whole lot of design effort. It's, it's purchasing things. And so we would look to add those, hopefully, sooner than later. Gates Charlie Middle School, failing infrastructure includes boilers, rooftop units, and some chillers. In terms of renovations, many of our classrooms have very old unit ventilators. Those are the heating systems that sit down near the windows. Many of those were working really hard to keep them running and having to get creative in finding parts. A lactation room, and then the digital entry sign on Buffalo Road would be replaced if this project is approved. No new work. Florence Brasser, generator, HVAC unit, boiler rooms. This is one of the two buildings in the district that has asphalt shingles, one being the old admin building, that's now the operation center, and Florence Brasser. So we would be replacing some of that. Renovations include the cafeteria, the cafeteria bathrooms. At every elementary, you'll see as I go through the slides, it includes the library media center, as well as a new digital message sign. Our elementaries do not have digital message signs. Some of them even include plugging the letters into the boards, the old-style boards. And we're looking to have a sign that can be programmed from within the building to share important information with our community. Rear parking lot paving and a kitchen expansion. The Florence Brasser kitchen is the smallest kitchen in our district by a long shot. Frankly, it's like a sardine can. It's very tight in there. And it's, it's so difficult and so tight of a space that we have to get really creative with how we schedule lunches. So looking to bring that up to more modern standards. Neil Armstrong includes rooftop and air handling units. Classroom carpet replacing, one of the things we had looked at in designing and scoping is to potentially eliminate open classrooms in both Neil Armstrong and Walt Disney. In order to do that, we would have to frankly expand the footprint of the building out because the hallways wouldn't be big enough. And so we're kind of grandfathered in, not we're kind of, we are grandfathered in with the space that we have. If we touch that space, then we have to bring it up to current code, which would be, which would include widening those spaces. We're unable to do that because for each of those buildings, it would be anywhere from $50 to $60 million just to bulldoze those wings and build new ones. And so in lieu of that, we're going to replace the carpets, which has been a consistent issue in those buildings, and try and do some other sprucing up of those spaces. Point of information is we would look to replace those carpets with more of like a VCT tile, something that's a hard surface instead of carpeting those spaces. Renovations include lactation room, again, in all these buildings, library media center, and additional flooring. And the back include, the back of that building, there are some paving and drainage issues we would address, and again, a digital message sign. Paul Road, some of the same things that you would see in the other areas, rooftop units, lactation room, library media center. One thing that's interesting about that building is that right now, there's pavement going right up to the front of the building where the bus loop is, and there is no curb. And so one thing that we'd be looking to do is put in a sidewalk and create a curb so that if a bus ever were to roll, for whatever reason, that it wouldn't roll into where kids are getting in and off of buses. So to create a safer situation where there would actually be a curb, but stop for the bus if it was to roll. And then in addition to that, the digital message sign. Right now, around that building, the sidewalk is not fully connected, so for safety reasons, and especially during drills, we would be able to get all the way around the building. And then another one for that building is that right now, it's on a busy road, Paul Road, and we have a number of students who cross from the neighborhood across the street from Paul Road onto the Paul Road school property. And in order to do that, they have to cross that road, and then they have nowhere to go. There's no sidewalk leading to the building, so they either cut through the grass or they walk up the bus loop. Is we'd be looking to put in a sidewalk as well as a crosswalk so that students in that neighborhood can get across the street in a safe way. And then some adaptive playground equipment, acknowledging that there is not enough adaptive playground equipment in that building for our students with disabilities. At Walt Disney, you'll see much of the same things that you would see at Neil Armstrong. And then in other buildings, we have our old administrative, administration building, that's now called the operation center. We have the transportation facility, and then we have some other ancillary maintenance and storage-type facilities. At the current admin space, we'd replace some of the roofing. We'd replace the roofing at the stadium and grounds equipment storage building. We would do some flooring replacement and abatement in the current admin building, add a lactation room at transportation. Currently, during large events, we have rental bathroom facilities out behind the stadium. And we would be looking to put, would be looking to put a hallway into the current bathrooms that are in the current, or now current, operation center. Be looking to put a hallway in so that when we have events, community members, visitors can use that space for bathrooms, as well as increasing the size of the Gates Charlie food pantry. And then finally, we would look to put a concession stand in that building, as well as some additional paving at the transportation facility. So in terms of financial considerations, our building aid ratio, it's typically between 80 and 81% right now. And what does that mean is that if we're doing work that's aidable, then we get 81 cents back on the dollar. And so when we think about planning these Capitol projects, it's really important that we're considering when work is aidable. And the way that that's calculated is every five years, the state assigns a certain amount of money to each of our buildings that we're able to get aid back on, and it's a rolling five-year window. And so that's the maximum cost allowance aidability component, is we want to make sure that as we plan these projects and that rolling window of aid becomes available, that we're utilizing it to the best of its ability. Again, because when we get 81 cents back on the dollar, it means that it doesn't require community burden in terms of taxation based on the plan that we put in place. Utilizing existing debt service and looking at when our mortgage payments, essentially for prior work, our interest and principal payments drop off, and making sure that we're keeping our debt service level. And then our credit rating, as well as, again, having no impact on taxes. So in terms of this project, we started planning in January 2024. Again, it's a year-long process to get to where we are today. The design phase would take us until spring of '26 and later. And in terms of construction, we would be looking to do construction currently over four phases, with that last phase going into 2032. So it's a long process. Referendum itself, looking at a proposal that includes $88 million all-in. The propositions on the ballot would be the approval to undertake the project. And then also, a second proposition includes our ability to use $4 million in capital reserve funds for security infrastructure. This was a reserve that was created a few years ago by the public through referendum. And we now have the money in that reserve that would allow us to increase security features here at the high school and also at the middle school, including electronic door locks and also electronic clocks. And so right now, we have analog clocks, and we have an analog PA system at the middle school. And the clocks in the high school have failed, and the PA system does not work well at the middle school. And so looking to upgrade those to a digital system that also ties into our Tap App security feature so that if we were to go into lockdown, it would announce it through that system. It would also put it out in words, lockdown, lockdown, across that system. It would be an integrated system across those buildings. So the vote is on Wednesday, February 5th, from 6:30 to 8:30, 6:30 AM to 8:30 PM at the Spartan Field House at the Gates Charlie High School at One Spartan Way. Please come out and vote. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. It is now time that we can close the hearing since there's no public comment. So now can I ask for a motion to resume the regular business meeting? Ms. Littlewood, Ms. Kais, any discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous. We're now back in public session. Move us on to the GC Pride Awards.
I'm honored every year to be able to present the Gates Charlie Pride Award. This year is no different, being able to honor it to Michelle Mandola. She's one of our bus drivers that has been with us for almost 20 years. I looked today, it was very close. I can't say 20, but we're right there. She's someone that just goes above and beyond every year. She was always a sub when I first started. She did everything and she could. Now she has her own run, and she still tries. Everyone knows we're short. We'll call on the radio and say, "This kid got missed," or whatever. And somehow, Michelle is always on the radio saying, "I think I can fit it in. If I go here first, I do this, and I can do this." And a lot of times, I actually have to say, "It's okay. We'll figure it out," because it's not possible, right? Like, but it's just who she is. I know, you know, a lot of times, we're trying to get drivers to learn kids, and Michelle's someone that knows probably more kids than on every run. Even today, when I get in, she's like, "I think I know his kids, and I remember over there." Like, she knows parents. She just knows our community so well. So it's a very nice honor to award this to Michelle for the Gates Charlie Pride Award for this year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you gotta talk.
Oh, no. No, man. No, no. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Do we have any agenda changes, sir?
We added agenda changes to personnel.
Thanks. All right, that moves us forward to Board President comments. First, I just want to take a moment, mostly to remind ourselves, but to make sure that we're just kind of sharing some of the work we do as a board to make sure we're continuing to grow and to learn, to do our jobs better. We're doing a book study right now, and it's actually a really easy read. The way it's formatted, it's a, how to, it's something, "How to be a good board member, how not to be a..." Sorry, I'm bad at the title remembering. We've got it. It's okay. It's really, it's a, it is. But thank you, "How Not to be a Terrible School Board Member", which is kind of written in like a very lighthearted way, but to address kind of the serious work that we do, really always being grounded in representing our students, our mission and vision and values as a district. And we'll be kind of discussing it, talking about our takeaways, the things we learned in upcoming March time together. Just as a reminder for all of us, it looks like some of us have it with us, which is awesome. And as I was thinking about that, and the fact that we're at mid-year time, regents just happened, there's a lot going on each day in our world, in our community, and just taking a minute to kind of re-ground ourselves into not only the work we've done so far and the work we have to do, but kind of reminding ourselves of that mission and vision and goals we have for ourselves as a board, for the district, and to be able to support our kids. So I'm not going to necessarily go back and read word for word our mission and vision and goals, but kind of just touching on some of those pieces that really center us, and we need sometimes to like pause for a minute and really focus on it, because life gets hard and busy. But really, here at Gates Charlie, a big part of what we're doing and focusing on is providing that sound education for all of our students, working to inspire excellence in each of our learners, establishing healthy and caring relationships for not only our students, but our staff, and being able to refocus in that, and for our families and the rest of our community. We have that Spartan Way, which, especially if you go in our elementary schools, they all know those kind of words and that little statement, because it's kind of focusing in on as few words as possible to get to those core values of respect, responsibility, hard work, and compassion. And just kind of revisiting as well, apparently I'm saying a lot of kindos tonight, sorry. Those goals we have for ourselves, that fostering belonging through equitable access to culturally responsive and restorative practices, supporting the wellness of all the people in our learning community, focusing on increasing our academic achievement by access to rigorous instructional practices, using data to monitor that, all the work that keeps coming and being reported out on each meeting, and that work that we have for ourselves as a board of really working on our communication and pulling in families in the community as well. So just wanted to take that moment to make sure that we all can pause and ground ourselves because it's the middle of the year, and sometimes we need to reset for a moment. That moves us forward now to points of interest. Does anybody have anything to share? Dr. Richards?
That's okay. I'll use my educator voice. Just went to the junior Spartans game this past weekend. And I know particular interest in the fourth grade greatest team, but watching them play on, at our field house, where we are able to host a number of games at one time, it was exciting to see family and friends out to support them. And I know with the fourth grade team, they won again, twice in a row. So just to say that it's good to be able to house our students in an additional athletic way and making sure that our, our community knows that it's, we're proud, we're Gates Charlie proud. And it was good, it was a good thing to see them play.
Thank you. Any additional points of interest? Ms. Kais?
This is upcoming, but on February 7th, next Friday evening, Java Jazz will be here in the PAC. Always a big fundraiser option for our band and music kids for their upcoming trip to Orlando. But they have great musicians come in, kids get to play on stage with them, they work with them during the day. Look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you so much. Any other points of interest? Okay, thank you. That moves us on to reports of meetings. Have there been any meetings? Mr. Muscato?
I had the opportunity to attend the Monroe County School Board Association's Information Exchange Committee meeting. The topic was the New York State Department of Labor's Teacher Ambassador Program. The focus of the program was to help schools develop career or technical education programs and to enhance the opportunities for students to take these. Looking at the job market, basically, point being that we're going to have 500,000 skilled labor people retire. And we only have maybe 200,000 at the moment in the pipeline. So the idea was to enhance that and to say, it's not an issue of college, excuse me, college or trade, it's college and, and try to have the kids be aware, there's a lot of opportunities, and college is not the only one. So it was well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other meetings? Okay, Dr. Richards, hold on.
I had the opportunity to attend the NSBA Equity Council membership meeting. Well, it was good to hear from districts around the area. Well, it was good to hear from districts around the area, just kind of a report on where things stand and just to, you know, have a, a voice with other colleagues and kind of to be able to let someone, let their hair down and release some of the frustration that we have going on in our education today. But I think it was very good to be able to sit on that call with, when we were districts across the state, from upstate to downstate, but it was good to be able to, to see some new colleagues and meet colleagues that you hadn't talked to in a while.
Thank you. Do we have any visitor comments? Okay, that moves us forward to our reports. We have our transportation report.
Good evening again, everyone. Tonight, it'll be nice to be able to show you a little bit what our department's doing. The main focus of tonight's report will be based around our electric school buses. We are one of, if not the leader in the state, so it's definitely, wanted to give you some information on where we're at and where we're going with that. But before we get there, just a little, a couple of quick slides. This is our team. We have 80 driver positions, 11 openings, four people are training, two of those are attendants, which is nice. So, we are fully staffed in attendance, but hopefully after tomorrow, we aren't because one of them's taking their road tests tomorrow and so is someone that's not in attendance. So, hopefully in the next week or two, we get four more drivers on. Our mechanic staff is fully staffed at six and then there's five office staff members, including myself. We do 391 trips a day. That includes everything. One of the nice things about Gates-Shalai, I just had someone come in today that is looking to come to Gates to be a driver, and one of the things I always tell them every year is, it's so nice that we do every student in-house. We don't contract out anybody. It's great. So, when a driver needs support, if we can't give it, our people's service department helps us. And it's just really nice that we can give the drivers everything that they need to be able to transport the students. I wanted to blow up the map a little bit bigger, something I get all the time, so I don't know if you do, is, but why is Gates-Shalai over on this side of the city? Why is Gates-Shalai's bus over here? Every purple building is somewhere we go every day. So, we have seven buildings in-house and out of our 391 trips, we go all over. Being 15 miles near almost every charter school, if a parent wants to go there, we transport to them, our special ed department, those are all the buildings that we go to. They might fluctuate daily a little bit if a program changes, but those are the buildings that we transport to. And when you look at it like that, it sometimes it's like, whoa, those are all over. So, to do that, we have, I would say, the best fleet in the state. We have, our current fleet is 87 buses. After we get our delivery that we, our, finish our delivery from last year, we'll have 15 electric buses. Those are the ones, it's a little hard to see, but they're highlighted in green. And then, looking into next year, we're looking to purchase 14 new buses. Those will be diesel. We've pretty much maxed out right now at this point, our grants, and we are looking to downsize our fleet by two buses. We do track data every year, monitor our trips, monitor our students, monitor our fleet, and we have come to the conclusion that we can downsize our fleet, which will help save an overall maintenance cost. Oh, nice thing too is we will be auctioning those. So, like, a lot of times, you'll see when we purchase new buses, we say, those are trade prices unless we can get a better price. This will give us really good information on what's a good value out there for our trades coming in next year. So, it'll definitely help us hopefully get a better price. Being the leader in electric school buses, after we get our 15 total buses, we have five on the road right now. We took delivery of two of the four, two of the 10 that we bought last year already and once we get our chargers, we'll have the rest delivered. We'll have 17% of our fleet, electric school buses. So, it's definitely a huge undertaking. It's our mechanics, our drivers, our maintenance staff, our admin, our board, everyone, to be able to do that, that's a huge accomplishment. I don't know in other districts that will have that many electric buses already, taking advantage of everything that we've been able to do. With that, we were just awarded from the Greater Rochester Clean Cities, the Leadership Award. You wanted me to bring the prop. It's a little better to show, how to bring the prop. It is a nice award. We were sitting there wondering what it was going to be like, but it's a very nice award. And we were recognized for our transition to electric school buses in the community. We're able to take advantage of some more funding. We were just awarded in December, the other half of the grant. We finished our, we didn't finish our plan yet, but because we were so far ahead, the state gave us the infrastructure grant to be able to purchase those chargers, to get our buses on the road faster. We're also looking to have extra money in there to set us up for the future, so there's no extra cost on infrastructure, bringing in power. Being a leader comes with challenges. So, one of the things I wanted to say is something we found out, is you hear, you still see it on commercials now, is that off-peak charging. Everyone's, you know, everyone, you could charge it late at night. That really doesn't exist until you hit certain, they call them tariffs. I know it's kind of a weird word, but it's a fee. And the way it works is if you use a certain amount of power within 30 minutes, that's how they determine what rate you go to. It's not how much power you use in the month, they base it off 30 minutes. And then, what they'll do is put you in it. And I've learned a lot about electric in the last year and pretty much, we're right in the middle right now. We're past the, the 100 kilowatts an hour and we're under the 300. So, there's only one more rate that we can go above and that wouldn't be until we had a lot of buses on the road. And they, everyone involved is working on it. So, our current infrastructure and that rate structure does not allow a really good plan for school districts. And that's really what we've been working on with everybody. They're hoping to have a school-specific tariff, they call it, by the end of this year. So, to put a little timeline in that, we had our buses on the road in 2022. It took until May of '23 for R.G.N.E. to determine how to even bill us, right? So, that was our first, wow, this is how this works, right? It took that long. That started working when, we started working with NYSRDA right away, showing them what's happening, how things are working. And we had our new chargers installed in 24 of January. Those chargers gave us a lot more capability. They were going to allow us to charge this bus at this time, this bus at this time, and really try to spread out the power. With that, in April, R.G.N.E. determined we still hit that next rate structure. So, that's when we started advocating right away. We were able to get a 50% rebate on our demand charges to offset that. No one wants to penalize you for being first, so they're trying to work with us on that. So, that's why I kind of wanted to, there's so many rumors that are flying out there, I kind of wanted to throw out how that rate structure works and where we've been on the timeline. With all of that, the nice thing is, these are all the people we've been working with. So, being first and being the leader, it's really nice. I don't think many directors of transportation have the head of Public Service Commission's cellphone, right? So, like, they were calling me, I'm calling them. Part of that grant that we were awarded was based off of numbers that we gave the state and a lot of people will benefit from what we've done here. R.G.N.E. Bus Manufacturers, Assemblymember Sarah Clark came out. She's someone that's been working with the state on this quite a bit. She came and met with Chris Mitch and I. So, everyone's working together to get to where we need to be. Going to that lunch for the Leadership Award. They were a beautiful building, they had the new geothermal. It was a little cold in some areas, right? So, being the leader, just because you have it, doesn't mean there's not bugs and stuff. So, you know, we're working on all of that. So, some key takeaways, we started this before there was any mandate out there. We, Mitch and I met with our bus manufacturers and we started this before there was ever any talk. When we got our first two buses, the state only had enough money to buy 10. So, that's where we started to where we are now. So, being the early adopter, I mentioned all the great benefits, having those connections and having people trying to work with us and, and really care to make sure this takes off is, is a nice thing that we have. And then, just willing to work through all these in a fiscal way. So, we got the rebate. We've been working with, like I said, this year, the Public Service Commission hopes to have that new rate and really, they're basing it all off of our numbers and how we're doing. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our student ex officio update.
Good evening. Today, I'm actually going to start off with the middle school. In the past few months, the middle school has hosted a very successful fundraiser for the winter and they raised over $1,700 with their Jingle Jars fundraiser. And the student council is also collaborating with the school nutrition team to host a food show on February 5th, where students will be sampling possible additions to their school menu. And at the high school, it's been a great addition to see the new fax rooms. And in addition, there's been a bunch of new murals across the high school painted by the peer leadership team. And for the district as a whole, I'm actually going to be representing the Gates-Shalai Central School District at the Monroe County School Board Association's Legislative Breakfast this Saturday. I'll be presenting about Gates-Shalai security and safety with the goal of promoting increased funding streams for districts to use for their security infrastructure. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas. I'll see you on Saturday. Next, we have our capital project update. Can you present by yourself?
What was that? I know. He didn't wear a suit today. All right, good evening, everyone. It's been six weeks since our last update, so a lot has happened and we've been very busy with the capital project, as Dr. Ball had already mentioned. We've turned over a couple more spaces, so we'll see a couple photos of those tonight and talk about them. Our general contractor, we completed the district office move. We have, we are ongoing punch list in this space. So, punch list is when the architect and the engineer walk through the space, they create a list of deficiencies that is then distributed to the contractor and they need to correct all of these items prior to their final payment. So, the general contractor for phase one is completing those items in the district office, as well as in the fax space. Since our last meeting, before we turned over the space, they did complete the casework in that space, so the cabinets, as well as the countertops. We'll see some photos of those, they came out very nice shortly. The high school technology space, the steel is up and the roof metal is in. We're waiting for a little bit warmer weather to put the roofing material down, to air, to dry that space in. And the middle school technology, drywall finishing is complete, as well as some of the ceiling paint in the classrooms. And then, we've started the wall tiling for that space and we'll see a couple photos of that as well. Plumbing-wise, the sinks are all in the fax space. Again, that space is turned over, kids moved in on Monday. There was a small mishap with a water line busting and soaking a brand-new classroom, but that was cleaned up and taken care of. High school technology, the roof drains are in for the roof that was just installed. And then, the high school or the middle school technology, the domestic water lines for those classrooms are all finished overhead. Mechanically, punch list in district office and fax as well. Continued high school technology ductwork roughing. So, in the two classrooms that are already existing, they've continued to run ductwork for that space in preparation of being painted. The middle school technology, continued roughing as well. The new unit heater or cabinet units have been installed in those classrooms that feed the ductwork for each classroom. Those rooms don't have a large unit on the roof, they all are served by a small unit in the space. And then, the middle school technology for the wood shop space, the dust collector ductwork is being installed. Electrically, again, punch list in district office and fax. Middle school technology, the lighting in the classrooms has been installed. And then, the high school technology, they're continuing to pull wire and install conduit for that space. We've started phase two. At the last meeting, we had, we're awarding those contracts. It's minor items so far, but the site work contractor has started the preparation of the temporary conditions at Florence-Brasser, as well as the middle school fields. If you came in today off Buffalo Road, you may have noticed the chain link fence that's up and the large number of equipment that is over there. We're starting that a little bit ahead of schedule, that they want to be pretty aggressive with these fields. So, our goal is to turn those over by October. General trades, similarly in Florence-Brasser, temporary walls have been installed in the, to block off where the main office will be going. And then, the minor abatement of those two rooms. And then, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing contractors, they have done some minor demolition work in the new main office space. So, a schedule for February 2025, high school technology, this has been on the list a couple times, but pour the concrete slab. We've been fighting weather for a long time. Now that the roof is up, when the weather turns, we'll be able to pour that slab. As I mentioned previously, roofing of the new three rooms. And then, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing installations will be ongoing. And then, finally, we'd like to start getting some doors and windows into that space. Middle school technology, art and health, finishing all of the drywall and all of the painting. Continued MEP installations, so we're talking about final finishes, once the overheads have been painted. And then, hallway wall tiling and painting, and then finally, flooring throughout the space. The tech rooms get an epoxy resin flooring and then a couple other rooms have VCT tile. For phase two, Florence-Brasser, large-scale demolition of where the new main office will be going in what used to be off of Door 11, will still be Door 11. And then, abatement of the new OTPT area that is in the back of the building where the current gym storage is. And then, the middle school, as I mentioned before, preparation for the large undertaking of the fields. Budget, phase one, 20 million. This value has not changed. Since putting this presentation together, we have processed a couple more payment applications. We're now at 63% billed by contractors for phase one. Phase two contracts did increase in this value. We have a proposal in front of you all for an award for the Musco lighting later on today's meeting. And then, our contingency dollars is $2,65,027 and we're holding $570,000 in allowances between the two phases. Some photos, the last meeting, the district office was nearing completion. This is the fully carpeted new front lobby. This is a photo of the fax kitchen space with all the appliances, the, you'll notice a TV over the middle teaching island that is a down-facing camera so that the teacher can display to all the students what is happening. Another shot, you can see the TV on in that. This is the new wood delivery space for the high school technology. This is a shot of the inside of one of the, what will be one of the wood shop rooms for the high school technology. And then, in between the two wood shop rooms, there's what's called a finishing room for where they will do all the stains and painting of the wood, so there'll be special ventilation for this space. This is a curved hallway in the middle school. This is in the technology space. Everything that you see in white will end up being tiled. This will be a display case when the space is complete in the middle school. This will be for the art room. And then, a planter box outside of the, what will be the AIS room. And finally, a general photo of the Florence-Brasser room emptied. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, now, we have our 2025-26 budget update.
Good evening, Superintendent Daley, President Coffey, Vice President Richards, and the Board of Education. Thank you for having me. I'm here to present an update to the board on the planning of the 2025-26 budget. So, our agenda includes this evening specifically, revenue estimates, what vote propositions we anticipate will be on the ballot, Board of Education election information positions available, and then, next steps. So, in terms of revenue estimates, in our current year, the majority of our revenue comes from taxation and state aid. And that's the same and consistent for nearly all 700 districts across New York State. And then, there's some smaller items. We get sales tax from Monroe County, we use fund balance and reserves to help balance our budget. That's kind of, that our little relief valve at the end of the budgeting process. And then, other revenues that are much smaller in turn, including interest earnings, which we've done a very fantastic job of over the last two years. We have the highest investment score in the state for individuals that use the investment group that we use, payments in lieu of taxes, Medicaid fees, and tuition. So, in terms of the current state aid, our adopted budget is $55 million, a little above that, and we're on track and in good shape. So, I want to talk a little bit about foundation aid. There's a big change that could potentially be coming to the way that schools are funded in New York State, and it's specific to one of the metrics within the formula that the state uses to aid schools. So, one of the things that occurred last year was the governor, Governor Hochul indicated... So one of the things that occurred last year was the governor, Governor Hochul, indicated that as part of the approved budget, she wanted to see a provision in there that would include a full study of the foundation aid formula. There are many groups that have asked for a better method of calculating this foundation aid. What is foundation aid? Foundation aid is our major formula-driven aid. There's different types of aid. One is expense-driven aid, so things like transportation. We get funds back in the following year on transportation costs. Things done at BOSI's. We get aid back in the following year at things done in BOSI's. Building, you've heard a little bit about that with capital projects tonight. We get building aid on capital work that we do. The other type of aid is that formula-driven aid. Our largest formula in New York State for aid to schools is called the foundation aid formula. And so the Rockefeller study looked at this foundation aid formula and provided a whole bunch of recommendations. And how did they get there? They collected feedback from stakeholder groups. They did surveys. They met with education finance leaders and advocacy organizations. And I know that many of the people in this room have been a part of that, including myself and Mr. Daley, in terms of advocating for changes to this formula, because there were some components of it that frankly were inequitable, and they were certainly not helping Gates Chaile Central School District. So through that process and that study, it was a year-long process. In December, they released a report that gave about thirty recommendations for adjustments to the foundation aid formula. Right now, in the current funding model, the way foundation aid works right now is that there's really two measures of poverty that they use in order to calculate foundation aid. They look at a lot of things. They look at our number of students. They look at even the density of our population. They look at the wealth of our population. They look at students with disabilities and give us a greater amount of money for those kids, English language learners. So they look at a whole bunch of demographics and things that are specific to our district and AIDs. One of the big factors that they use is census poverty currently. Census poverty is an issue for us because they're using data from the year 2000. And so they literally have not updated the poverty indicator for the calculation of aid to the district in a quarter century. That's a long time ago, and we know that our population here in Gates Chaile has changed dramatically over the last twenty-four, twenty-five years. And so we have been advocating for a change in that, in the way that that's calculated. In addition to that, they use free and reduced lunch percentages. In many cases, that's problematic for cultural reasons, language barriers to people filling out applications. There's all kinds of reasons why having people have to fill out an application in order for it to be calculated for our aid is a problem. In addition to that, we are currently CEP. What's CEP? That's that Free School Meals program. Under the current methodology, they look at this data and they say, you know, how many people do you have that filled out these applications? Well, people aren't going to fill those applications out if their kids are getting free meals. There's no incentive to fill them out, because you're going to get the free meal anyway. And so in some ways, we're being disincentivized to be in the free meals program. And I can tell you that there's some other districts in Monroe County specifically and across the state who didn't enter the free meals program specifically because they know that they see a drop in foundation aid when they enter into that program, and that's been demonstrated over and over again. It didn't stop us, but it did stop some other districts in the state. And so that's also not a good indicator for how you fund education, especially when you have equity in mind, which is what the governor is helping to support. And so in the new model under the Rockefeller study, they're using something called SAPE data. Until December, I hadn't heard of SAPE. So this was new to me, too, is SAPE is the Small Area Income and Poverty Estimate. And so again, this is a recommendation from the Rockefeller study that they use this instead. It's calculated by the U.S. Census Bureau every single year, and it provides estimate of income and poverty. They use data like tax returns. And they use a whole bunch of data to say, based on your population of five-to-seventeen-year-olds, how many of those students are in poverty? And then they assign you a percentage. And so again, it's a different way to calculate poverty in a community, and that's what is in the Rockefeller study. The good news is, is that the governor wanted responsible improvements to the foundation aid formula, and this was absolutely one of the things that she included in the calculation of foundation aid for her executive proposal that I'll share in a minute. The three main initiatives via the governor right now are free meals for all kids. So to offset whatever federal reimbursements come in for school districts, regardless of the community's capacities to support free meals or not free meals, saying that all kids should eat free meals in New York State. Ban on cell phones. We don't have a lot of data on what that looks like. There's still a lot to understand about what that could potentially mean. And then to remedy this foundation aid formula. That was a big push of the governor's with an increase to school aid, a total of thirty-seven billion dollars. Not, that's not the increased amount, that's the total funding amount to education in New York. So what does this mean for Gates Chaile? A record increase in foundation aid, sixteen-plus percent, which is incredible when you think about it. And it's also further evidence to us and a justification, and you know, we feel good to see this information through the governor's proposal, because we've been saying this all along. We've been saying that it's not a good way to calculate this, that it's not reflective of our community need. And so this is good news for the district. It would mean, if this goes through, over five million dollar increase in foundation aid, which would certainly help us do some of the important work that we know that we need to do to provide an equitable education for our students. And we're absolutely having conversations about what are the things that we could support if we did get this increase in money, acknowledging that you'll see in a minute that we are utilizing fund balance and reserves. What are the ways that we can target areas that we know we could be doing better in? And so in addition to that, just wanted to share that we're going to be running two concurrent budgets, one where we get the money and one where we don't. So we have to develop two budgets, one where we get the full sixteen-plus percent and one where we get the typical two percent increase in aid. So in the governor's proposal specifically, you can see that there's that increase of five-point-two million dollars in foundation aid. In addition to that, the BOSI's aid, we've been working very hard to push expenses to BOSI's, because we know when we purchase things through BOSI's, we get about seventy cents back on every dollar we spend there. Building aid is not a drop. I'll share another slide in a moment. Excess cost aid, those are costs for students with disabilities. And then transportation aid is up as well, because again, we're trying to push things through the transportation aid category when they're spent on transportation, so that we can get aid back in those areas. One of those drivers is certainly energy costs have gone up. So in terms of that debt service number, although we would see an increase in building aid of about one-point-three million dollars, we do have additional payments. So this is when we talk about balancing those mortgage payments on capital work, like we talked about a little earlier, with the aid that's coming in. Although we'd see one-point-three million dollars in additional aid, we're also going to have about one-point-two-plus million dollars in additional cost in terms of principal and interest. And the way that we're balancing that in our budget in a responsible way is that we're getting in more aid than we're going to be paying for those debt service, principal, and interest payments for construction work. So although the aid's up quite a bit, there's a portion of it that's being used specifically to pay those debt service, principal, and interest payments. So final thoughts are SAPE is, is a huge win for Gates Chaile Central School District, if it goes through. And again, this is a governor's proposal. The foundation aid increase puts us, I was able to connect with the president of the Association of School Business Officials down in Albany, and was able to get some data sets and do some side-by-side comparison. And after looking at our increase, it's the seventh-largest increase percentage-wise in the state. So very good news for the district and also, again, indicative of the reality that for years, when thinking about an equity-based formula, we've been underfunded. And so now this is an acknowledgement of that and an opportunity for us to continue doing some of the great work we've been doing as a district. Building aid is increasing, and transportation increase is good, as well as cost shifting to BOSI's. In terms of the tax levy limit, it's capped at two percent as a base. And last year, the CPIU, the Consumer Price Index, on average, was two-point-nine percent. And so we start at two percent. That's the, that's the starting mark. If it was CPIU was less than two percent, we would be capped at that lower number. Our tax-based growth factor for last, for this, sorry, for last year is flat. The tax levy limits do March 1st, but there's still a number of factors that we don't have enough information in order to calculate it yet. Do anticipate in an upcoming board meeting that we would have that prior to that March 1st deadline. Other revenues, we have Monroe County sales tax, facilities use, continuing education and fees is a smaller portion. We, we get reimbursement for Medicaid. Right now, if you've been paying attention to the news, this was a late add to the slide, federal funds are uncertain because of things happening in Washington. And so we're hoping to be able to unpack that stuff soon with more releases from various organizations to see if there will be any impact on our budgeting process for next year. All other areas of revenue would remain stable. So I mentioned this earlier, we are reliant to some degree on our fund balance and reserve use. Most districts across New York State are leveraging fund balance and reserves to help balance their budgets. Right now, we're using five-point-nine million dollars. We would look to reduce our reliance on that if funds do come our way, so a portion of those funds we would hope to be, to use to reduce that dependency. So overall takeaway is, it's very promising, but we don't want to count the chickens till they're hatched. So, you know, we are cautiously optimistic and hoping that everything turns out the way it should, frankly, in terms of equity for our district. In terms of the vote propositions, we would have the budget approval, a bus purchase proposition, and one that we're starting to discuss as a potential capital reserve for future work, acknowledging that, as you heard earlier, there's a whole lot of work that still needs to be done in the district. And right now, we're at a point where we're trying to bring our buildings up to standards just from an infrastructure perspective, noting that our buildings of our similar, many of our buildings are similar vintage, and so we're starting to have some of the same problems in those buildings. We know that programmatically, we're going to have spaces that need to be updated as well, so we'd be looking to start saving up some money for future investment in programmatic and instructional areas. Three board seats are available, each with a three-year term, going out to June 30th, 2028. Expiring seats include those held by Frank Mascato, Dr. Christine Brown Richards, and Tanya Serbanowski. Petitions will be available on March 1st, 2025 with the district clerk. Next steps, we're going to continually collecting information for the tax cap calculation. We're going to await final state aid allocations, acknowledging that hopefully there's an on-time budget that would come on April 1st, and then we will get some numbers soon thereafter. So again, we're going to be doing a lot of planning district-wide to refine our expenditure budget. We have budget ambassadors coming up in March, so there's a lot of things moving right now in terms of the budget process. This is the budget calendar and timeline. I did mention a few of those things that are coming up, with the vote being on May 20th in the Spartan Field House. If there's any questions, please email communications@gateschaile.org. Any questions from the board?
Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You as well. All right. That moves us on to the consensus item agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda? What? Thank you, though. I appreciate it. Can I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda? Dr. Richards, Ms. Davis, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. The vote is unanimous. Let's move us on to our motion to approve consensus items C through H. Can I have a motion? Ms. Kais, Ms. Littlewood, any discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous. This moves us on to action items. Can I have a motion to approve the Gates Chaile High School HBCU visits, Washington, DC and Maryland, March 10th through 12th, 2025? Can I have a motion? Dr. Richards, Ms. Jennings, any discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous. Be it resolved that the board approves the following tenure appointments at the January 28th, 2025 meeting, as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Christine Smeaton in the tenure area of Special Education, and Ceniala Rollins in the tenure area of Assistant Principal. May I have a motion to approve? Ms. Littlewood, second. Ms. Serbanowski, any discussion?
All in favor?
The vote is unanimous. Can I have a motion to approve the contract number 208 Athletic Field Lighting bid to Musco Lighting? Can I have a motion? Dr. Richards, Ms. Littlewood, any discussion?
All in favor?
The vote is unanimous. Can I have a motion to approve the addendum to the 20, 2008, 2013 agreement with Richard Stein? Can I have a motion? Ms. Littlewood, second. Ms. Davis, any discussion?
All in favor?
The vote is unanimous. That moves us forward to our superintendent comments.
An important calendar reminder, we are closed to honor the Lunar New Year tomorrow. Thought to have originated in ancient China around thirty-five-hundred years ago is one of the most important holidays in Chinese culture, marking the end of winter and the beginning of the new year. 2025 marks the year of the snake, and in Chinese culture, the snake is a creature of wisdom, mystery, and transformation. As shared earlier in our presentations, our fax students started the new semester in their beautiful new spaces this week. As you heard during the capital project update tonight, our fax spaces are complete and ready for use. And a reminder to our community, we're about one week away from the vote on our proposed capital project, future-ready. The vote will take place on Wednesday, February 5th, from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. at our Spartan Field House at Gates Chaile High School. As you heard tonight during the public hearing, the project will address critical infrastructure and mechanical needs across our district. These improvements will ensure schools remain safe and in efficient environments for our students and staff. And it's important to stress that this project will have no additional tax impact on our community. For those of you who don't know, Bing is your Nemo. Our community has two opportunities to help raise funds and have fun while playing B-I-N-G-O this week. On Thursday, Neil Armstrong will host their bingo night in the Armstrong Cafeteria, beginning at 5:30. Then on Friday night, I will be one of the celebrity callers at Walt Disney's Bingo Night from 5:30. Both events benefit the respective PTOs. Yes, I am the least celebrity person there. And perhaps you have seen these events advertised on none other than Parent Square. We continue to see growth among our, amongst our parents, guardians, and students. This month, we saw an increase in student use of Parent Square's student component, Student Square. Students can activate and access their Student Square accounts through ClassLink to stay connected with their athletic coaches and club advisors. And then we had an exciting bit of news this week that relates to our facilities. Our Spartan Field House is now equipped with a huge video screen. The screen was installed last week, and the final result is phenomenal. This screen will be a game changer for in-district events like conference days and, of course, our high school graduation. And finally, we held our second meeting of the district equity team this week. We had solid attendance from our staff, students, and parents, guardians. During the meeting, we introduced Mrs. Carter as our new director and had a Zoom session with Dr. Malik Mohammed, sharing the progress we are making and the work being done. We're excited to welcome him back in person at our next conference day this March. And again, this Saturday, Lucas will be representing us and presenting to the whole group at the Monroe County School Board Association's Legislative Breakfast. I've seen the presentation. Lucas has done a great job putting together, and we're excited for him to share great things going on here in our district and have a chance to work with our legislators to advocate for Gates Chaile. That is my report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Ms. Jennings, Dr. Richards, any discussion? Sorry, Mr. Long? Sorry, Mr. Long, I'll have you third the motion. All right, all in favor? The vote is unanimous. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.